We are live. Alright, so I call to order a meeting of the North Andover School Committee. Today is Thursday, April 28, 2022, and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just picking up on the visual here, Ms. Picard, can you hear us? Very faintly. Just gonna work on that for a quick second. Can you say something, Helen?
I can say something, Andrew.
Okay. Thank you. Can you hear us any better now? I think Bill's making-
A little better, yep.
Okay.
It's, it's very cutting in and out. I don't know if Lindsay's having the same experience. She's nodding that she is also having that experience. So we'll do what we can, and if we have trouble, we'll let you know.
Okay. I think Bill will be trying to fix that as we're doing it. I see him pushing buttons and nodding away. Pulling out his hair. All good. Okay, so we will start with, just, we'll go around and identify who's in the room for those who are attending virtually. Ms. Petrowski?
Here.
Mr. Hicks?
Here.
Ms. Zvitsky?
Here.
And Ms. Picard, you are here virtually, correct?
I'm here, and Lindsay is with me.
Perfect, alright. Dr. Gilligan, you want to introduce your, your team?
Yeah, so, oh, you said Lindsay's there? Okay, great. Is Ethan there as well, or just Lindsay tonight?
Just Lindsay so far.
Okay. Terrific, and I have Lorraine Marks, Assistant Superintendent, Executive Director of Special Education, Marcy Bakuzzi, Dr. Mealy, Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operation. And in the audience, I have a couple folks representing tonight. Director of Food Services, Erica Murphy. Director Health and Wellness and Nursing, Cheryl Barzak. And our Director of Athletics, Stephen M. Nugent. So, I don't think I've missed anyone.
Okay. Perfect. We had no requests for dialing comments at last I heard at five, Ms. Picard? Anybody after that?
Not that I've been informed. We closed the forum down at five o'clock.
Okay. Perfect. Any public comment in the room? Alright, so we're gonna move ahead to consent. Agenda items for minutes of April 12, 2022. Is there a motion to accept the minutes?
I would make a motion to accept minutes on, for April 12, 2022, as presented in the packet.
Excellent. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Zvitsky. Alright, any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll call for a roll call vote. Ms. Picard?
Yes.
Ms. Petrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Ms. Zvitsky?
Yes.
And the Chair of Jets? Yes, the minutes are approved 5:00. Alright, moving on to the student report. I can't see Lindsay, but-
When she starts talking, she'll come up on the screen.
Okay. Could be the way the setting is. How are you, Lindsay?
I am definitely here.
Alright.
I'm starting off with something that happened today. It was the NEMASK Regional Conference. It's the Northeastern Massachusetts Conference, and we just had a Vice President elected from our town. It's Victoria Rubrum. So if you know her, give her a hand of applause. She tried really hard, and she had a great campaign. Nazdeka also attended with 11 students the International Career Development Conference in Atlanta, Georgia this week. It's a multi-day competition with over 17,000 students. So that's a big props to them. I could never do something like that. We also have the Sergeant Art Fair coming up from 5:00 to 7:00 on May 5th. So keep an eye out for that. I always loved looking at the art back then. We have the MCAS Math Section for Grades 3 and 5 on May 10. We have the MCAS Math Section for Grade 4 on the, let me just double check. That is on May 12. We also have Jazz Night on May 13 at the North Andover Middle School. I highly recommend as an ex-jazz band member. We also have Asia Night coming up on May 13 at the North Andover High School Cafeteria. So if you don't know, that's a celebration of the different Asian cultures, especially since it is Asian American Heritage Month as of May. And Drama Guild is preparing for their senior musical for June. I don't know what exactly it is, but Ethan told me that it's coming up soon, so I'm really psyched for it. We have junior prom tomorrow, so a lot of them are really excited, getting their nails done and everything. And on one last serious note, we have AP exams coming up. That is next week, and dates and exam rooms have been emailed by Caitlin Brigato two days ago. If you have a morning exam, that starts at 7:30, so try to get there pretty early. And that is all for the student report.
Alright. Any questions for Lindsay? We'll start virtually there, Ms. Picard?
No questions. Thank you, Lindsay.
Ms. Petrowski?
No questions. Thank you.
Mr. Hicks?
No questions. Thank you.
No questions.
Lindsay, I just have one question. I know there's a date coming soon on May 1st for college acceptances. Is that sweatshirt any indication?
I was wondering that.
I forgot to mention that about the national deadline for colleges. This simply just says Boston. I just kept the shields, I'm sorry.
Alright, okay.
I'm sorry for that. I'm still deciding, so.
I, I know that very well, so, good luck.
Thank you.
Alright. Perfect. Well, you're welcome to stay. You're welcome to get ready for your APs.
Thank you so much.
Alright. Alright, Dr. Gilligan?
Great. So a few updates tonight, and we'll stick to what's on the agenda, and I have a few additional items. But I'd like to start with the health update. And it's great to have Cheryl back, you know.
Thanks for a few weeks off.
You know, and hopefully we can continue, you know, with me reporting out on some of these things. But it is great to see you, Cheryl.
Sure.
So if we start with the health update tonight.
So we'll follow with the same slides that we have been presenting all year. Today, the total number of positive cases in the district is 22. And here's the, each day, we've been posting the number on this chart. And we've pretty much stayed between 20, 21, 22 the last few weeks, and most of that this month. Here's the weekly report that we present, we send to DESI every Wednesday. And so this last week, there were 29. And the top row is from September all the way through March, just so that we could have room. Because I wanted to show that we only have those last few weeks left of school. That's it. So this is, we've had 1,517 cases so far. And I looked through months. It was like January, there were 938. So it's nice to see that they're, they're less and less, and March was one of the lower ones. Here's the vaccine percentages. Each week, we update this, and there's usually three or four new students vaccinated. And the staff has not been updated since the beginning of the year. So that number's probably much higher now, but we're really tracking the students on this chart. And I wanted to throw in one or two slides that weren't COVID.
Thank you.
This is a little bit premature. Health Office visits, in June, you'll have the final numbers, but I just wanted to give you a ballpark of where we are right now at 37,000 visits. It's running actually about where we have in other years. March was really high, though. About 1,000 visits more than we have had any other month, so. I haven't looked in detail, and June I can give you more information about what types of visits we had. But in March, there were definitely more colds, allergies. We did have some flu, flu A. We had about 12 positive flu A cases in the month of March. So that's what the Health Office visits are as of yesterday in the morning. And the medications, daily meds, as well as PRN, which are as-needed medications. And certainly, a large number of parent communications because of COVID, as well as our typical parent communications. One number that's a little bit high this year so far is 18 911 calls. They were very, they were pretty serious calls this year. So this was a year of a lot of emergencies that we've had. And I don't know what to attribute it to, but that was something that I noticed as I was looking through data this week. So we're coming back to normal again a little bit, without so much work with COVID and having to contact trace. The nurses have been able to spend more time. One of the projects that the nurses are working with guidance and teachers at the high school is Knight's Locker, which you probably already heard about. It's modeled after the Knight's Closet and, at the middle school, and they're collecting donations. And I looked at the site yesterday. It's a great place at the high school. And it, if it, you know, models the middle school, it really, really has helped meet the needs and help our students that need clothing and toiletries with self-esteem. And these are new clothes typically that people donate. So we're really great that that's gonna be starting really soon. The nurses are all back to our mandated health screenings. DPH now requires that we're back to all hearing and vision in all of the schools, postural in grade 5 through 9, and then Esper in the middle and high school. We had 5th grade Parent Puberty Night on April 6th. It was extremely well-attended. I counted about 120 parents, and then I stopped counting, so that was really great. We had to do that virtually. We gave parents the video last year during COVID, so they were happy that we are, or the nurses are doing 5th grade classes again. And then our health classes. We don't have health teachers at the elementary level and the nurses. These are the classes we weren't able to do last year, but they're back to doing dental and choking Charlie, sun safety, and these courses. So that's, it's, it's great that we're kind of able to do some of our more traditional school nurse activities. Questions?
Awesome. I can't see Ms. Picard, but, Ms. Picard, any questions?
Yes. I don't know why you can't see me. Can you see me now?
You'll be able to see in a second.
Yeah, I think it's just the way it's being presented. Now we can kinda see you.
Okay. I, I do have a few questions. Ms. Barzak, I looked at the numbers that we had pre-COVID, which were in June, and there were like 45,000 nurse visits, and we're at 37,000 now. I wondered if that was, if the med visits were not included in the 37 this time, and maybe were included last time? So maybe at the end of the year, when you present these numbers, you can help us understand if there's been, you know, a significant drop? Because it doesn't sound like there has been, since you said March is higher than it has been before.
And, and May is typically our highest month ever, so I think we're gonna finish about the same. Maybe a little bit higher, actually.
And then, I noticed that we have seven cases at NAMs this week. Is that like seven kids, like all in the same class, or seven kids spread throughout the school?
That is staff and students, and they're spread through different grades even, and classes, yes. Good question.
So not, not a class?
Good question, yeah. The last cluster we had was that one at the preschool last month.
Okay. And then, I, I think I know the answer to this, but I just think, you know, for the public and new members, we have the Knight's Closet at NAMs, we have the Knight's Locker that's starting at the high school. Can you speak to what happens for elementary school students who need clothing?
So in elementary school, students need clothing all the time. So every elementary school nurse has the stash already, because at recess, they get wet or dirty, and there's many, many times when elementary students need clothing. So every nurse has clothes at the elementary school and at preschool in kindergarten.
Thank you. And I, I just wanna give a plug to parents to pay attention to the hearing and vision screenings and those other screenings. My sister was a kindergarten student whose vision was, was found that she really needed glasses. She came out of the, the eye doctor with her glasses saying, "Oh my goodness, there are words on those signs." So she had no idea that street signs had words on them. And I myself have a hearing deficit that was found every year by the school nurse, but we did not follow up on it until I was out of college. So those are really important screenings. I appreciate that the nurses are doing that, and I, I just encourage parents to, to take action on those if there's any recommended action.
Yeah, that's a great point, and our goal is to get 100% referral rate. So each year, we try to improve our return referral rates. And we follow up a lot to make sure that, that gets done. So thank you.
Well, thank you for doing that. And it was a different time, and things, things were different then, but I know, I know how important it is for me. It's changed my life to have hearing devices, so I appreciate you doing that. And then finally, this is a question, I wonder if something that we need to act on. When you talk about sun safety, we have playgrounds. I don't know, I, I've been to playgrounds where they have like, you know, sunblock in a squirter, just like you have the hand sanitizer in a squirter. I don't know if we have that, or we would wanna think about that, or if that's not helpful.
I wish we could do that. It's considered medication, over-the-counter medication, and we would need specific permission from every parent for that brand. So we do recommend that all students carry their own and apply it before school, and we can assist with applying it as long as it's, belongs to the student and the parent gives permission. It's, yeah, it's interesting. I was surprised when I learned that.
Well, I know that, that FSA or HSA cards will pay for that, so that makes sense to me. So thank you. Thank you for that clarification. Thank you for your report.
Awesome. Ms. Petrowski?
No questions, but thank you for everything this year. It's nice to see things back to normal.
Mr. Hicks?
One clarifying question. In terms of March, was that just the highest of the year, or the highest March you've seen?
So it's the highest March that we've seen. May is usually the highest month, so we'll see how it goes.
Thank you. And just, your, the nursing staff is amazing. My son is a frequent visitor to Nurse Fuller at Atkinson. And like, I just know that nursing staff's done amazing work this year. Been called on to do a lot more than they usually have done, and it's just been, they've risen to the challenge, so thank you very much.
They really have. And I should shout out to Ms. Fuller, because she did the parent presentation for puberty night.
Yeah.
Which was great. Used to be Betsy Marshall, and now Helen's taken over.
Thank you so much. No questions?
Sure.
This is great. Thank you very much. Really, no questions, but really just a comment. I mean, the Knight's Closet and the Knight's Lockers are just absolutely huge. And I'd be so pleased to see that, that, I think the Knight's Locker came out maybe a week or so ago? And they, they all have, or they both, I should say, have links to Amazon for things that people need. And I just wanna be sure, you know, can we put those links out, you know, perhaps on the webpage? Tweet them out, because I know when they're starting off, and seasons change, like all of a sudden, and it's like, oh my goodness, we need a gazillion pairs of socks, or, you know, different, different products that are out there. And I think for a lot of people going on to those and seeing what's there is very humbling to see what, what our needs are in our schools. So if we can-
Yeah, we can do that.
Help stock those shelves, that would be fantastic. Thank you.
Yeah, so Cheryl, thank you for coming. You've done an amazing job this year, every year. But when you, when I think about all the work that we've done around COVID for years now, and that on top of the regular daily, you know, medications and, you know, emergencies, and taking care of students with diabetes, and all the things that we do normally in school, you and your team have been absolutely remarkable, and I appreciate it.
Thanks, and thanks for all the support that we get from all of you. We really appreciate it.
Awesome. Thank you. Alright, great. Great to have Erica Murphy back, Director of Food Services. And I won't give away the whole story, Dr. Mealy. She's here to talk about the update on the free lunch extension.
We asked Erica to come in tonight to explain what that means, once the state has made that decision, but also to answer any questions you guys have.
So as you know, we've had free meals for the last two years. And unfortunately, the federal government did not extend free meals for all for the 22, 23 school year. So a lot of our programs are relying on our state governments to pick up the pieces. Fortunately, we got some great news the last, about two weeks ago, that the House approved about $110 million in their budget. And we're waiting to see if the Senate is gonna match that amount. There's no indication as of yet that that, that this will not happen. It looks as though that the Senate will be including this. Supposedly, the Senate's budget is due within a couple of weeks, and then it will move on to the governor for his signature. So I've worked closely with Christina Minicucci, and she's been phenomenal in advocating for the extension of free meals for all. So we're really hoping that it does pass, and it would be a great opportunity for the kids of North Andover to continue to receive free meals. So what we've been doing this school year with free meals, interestingly, our participation has increased 65 to 70% since we've had free meals. We will, prior to COVID, we were doing approximately 1,700 reimbursable meals. A lot of our program was à la carte sales at the middle school and high school. So the reimbursable meals between the pre-K through 12 was about 1,700. We're currently doing anywhere between 2,700 and 3,000 meals a day. So it's been a great opportunity to service these students. We hear in the lunch lines how wonderful it is to not have to worry about packing a lunch, having money in their point-of-sale accounts, relying on their parents to make sure that, that those accounts are replenished. And it's just been great actually interacting with the kids, knowing that everything is free and everything is on an equal playing field. I've received a lot of phone calls and emails from families expressing their gratitude for the free program. As many of you know, a lot of these families are still getting back on their feet since COVID, so it's been a great resource. We continue to have our Meal Distribution Program every Wednesday night from 5:00 to 7:00. We still service about 50, 50 families a day, which it has decreased quite a bit. But it's still, it's the same families that pretty much show up every single week and are just so grateful that we are able to provide them with five days now worth of breakfast and lunch. We will be starting our Summer Eats Program the first week in July. We're hoping to open a new site at Woodridge. I've already talked to Rob, and he's on board with that. So we'll do a daily feeding of breakfast and lunch. One thing that DESI is working on, although the federal government did not extend some of the waivers, what DESI is trying to do is extend the non-congregate feeding and the parent pickup. So we can open up a site at Woodridge, and a parent can pick up without the student being present. And they also don't have to eat on-site. They can take their meals home with them, which is great. We are trying to provide meals to some of the library programs. I'm waiting to hear from Kathleen to see what she sets up. And Rob is actually setting up at Woodridge quite a few daily programs. They're not opening the pool this year, which we thought we would get a lot of kids if they had opened the pool, but that's not the option this year. But they have a lot of daily programs, like, you know, they have like the exotic animals come, and they have a big slide and things like that. So we're hoping to tie in the breakfast and lunch programs to some of the activities that he has planned. And again, if the non-congregate feeding gets extended, we will continue our meal distribution program.
Great. You know, and all indications are, again, passed by the House, up to $110 million. It's indications, you know, look like, according to reports, at least in the press, that the Senate will be taking favorable action, we hope.
Yes.
And then the governor would sign. So this is big for North Andover. Again, thanks to our local legislators for advocating on our behalf.
Absolutely.
And, you know, this is really something that's been awesome for North Andover to be able to provide these meals, and particularly during a time of need. Erica does a tremendous job doing so, her staff, and we'll keep you posted on where we go from here, so we can get more information.
Absolutely.
Let's see if there's any questions from the community. Ms. Picard?
I really wanna thank Erica for all she did. I know that Christina has sung your praises, Erica, for really helping her to have the tools she needed to advocate in the House. You really provide a tremendous amount of information, in addition to all the, you know, the loving care that you're providing for families. And, you know, I said just before that, you know, the hearing and screening is important, like, and things have changed a lot over time. Like, these are not the school meals that we grew up with. Their ketchup is not counted as a vegetable, right? I mean, it's not a big sloppy green muck mess of spinach. It's really beautiful food, and I'm so thankful for all that you're doing.
Thank you.
Ms. Petrowski?
I don't really have any questions. Thank you. That, that, it's like you've covered everything you could possibly cover for, and it's so much more than just a school lunch and what happens. And it's so appreciated, appreciated. And then I just wanna ask, like, what can we do to support you? Because clearly, you're needed and appreciated, and we wanna make sure that you are supported.
Honestly, I feel like I'm completely supported. I'm fortunate to work with Jim, Ann, Gilly, and Lorraine. Anytime I have a question or need anything, they're always there for me. And I really appreciate it. I mean, everybody, Cheryl, is always right there as well, because we always work closely together with, you know, certainly when COVID first started, and her nursing crew helping us out during the summer to make sure that my staff stayed safe. And so it's been a great opportunity. And as far as additional support, if I need it, I'll certainly ask for it, and I know I'll get it.
Great. It's just, it was just so, like, one thing you said was, you know, all the free lunches evens out the playing field, and that's such an important aspect. I don't think a lot of people, or I, I think there are many people who don't realize what a challenge that is for some families, and how that can affect a kid's entire day.
Exactly.
If they come in and they're like, "Oh, I really want that, but I can't have that, because I don't have the money," and now it doesn't matter. And it just builds that equity amongst our schools that we're working really hard to make sure it's increasing and improving. So thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Hicks?
Yeah, a quick question. If we didn't have free lunch for all, how many students in our district would qualify for free and reduced lunch?
So-
What would we go back down to?
Prior to COVID, we had about 1,200 students approved for free and reduced, so that was close to about 25%. So the last two years, we haven't had families fill out paper applications, so we really don't know that number now, because everything's been free. The only time a family fills out that application is if they need free transportation, free community programs, or athletics.
Thank you. No, you guys are doing a great job. It's, as a parent, it's wonderfully easy to be able to go online and do all the ordering and not have to stress about all that stuff.
It's a cool system.
Given all the other things that we are worried about right now, that has been, made our lives a lot easier, so thank you.
I'm glad to hear it.
No questions?
Thank you, Erica.
Just a quick comment. My middle son is 16, and he affectionately refers to the school lunch as first lunch, because then he comes home and eats his second lunch. But when I told him that it was free again next year, he was like, "Oh my God, I love it. It's so good." So if you're, you're enticing a 16-year-old boy to eat school lunches, as Ms. Picard said, it is not the lunch that we grew up on 30 years ago. So well done. My only kinda quick question is, I saw something, I don't, I don't remember if it was in the, the news or just something that came across with the Y and the food truck and the distribution. And what relationship do you have with that? Is that completely separate? How do you?
I'm not understanding, the food, meal distribution line?
No, there's, I think it was a food truck that was out- No, there's, I think it was a food truck that was out.
Oh.
Sponsored by the Y or?
It is, I'm not quite sure who's sponsoring it. I thought it was like a local restaurant or something like that was setting up a food truck and any family from the area could come and get dinner meals. I'm not associated with it. I've been told about it.
Okay, so nothing to do with us?
No.
Okay. I'm just wondering if that's something we might want to help try to publicize once we have some more information, if we have certainly families who are in need of.
Absolutely.
Awesome. Great.
Yeah, so on that note, Mr. McDevitt, North Andover partnered with the Y. And we put information out about this during break. And they had that mobile food pantry on Tuesday, April 19th.
Okay.
And they had it at three locations across our community for folks to come.
So it was just town, it wasn't?
With the town and the Y.
Town and the Y, with the schools. Okay.
Yeah, so, you know, certainly something we were aware of and working with. And the Y's been collecting, you know, they collect quite a bit with that mobile. It's quite a big bus. I only know the executive director lives a few houses down. I've seen it parked in his driveway. But it was big. But no, they partnered with our community in the town. And so we were able to get that information out and put the information out on Twitter and different things where we had the location. So really lucky to have a good relationship.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Erica. Just a couple of other quick updates. The town manager and I, oh, Mr. Nugent. Sorry about that. Sorry about that there, Steve. So I'd like to welcome up next and introduce first-year athletic director at North Andover High School, Steve Nugent. You know, typically, the director of athletics is probably coming in once a year to give like an end-of-the-year report. But I thought this might be an opportunity just to have Steve introduce himself, talk about a few highlights and, you know, give him a chance to introduce himself to the community, although I do not think he needs an introduction. But for those who may not know, Steve, he's been a longtime employee and colleague. So Steve Nugent, athletic director.
Thank you, Dr. Gilligan. Thank you all for having me here tonight. I just, I think we've been doing a lot of work at the high school and not quite yet ready to come before you with requests or recommendations. But I wanted to kind of give you a preview of where we're at now. I believe I'll be ready within the next four weeks to make some recommendations that are kind of time-sensitive, but I'll get to that in a second. So when I first took the job back in July 1, I think my goal was to be available and do a lot more communicating. So, and part of that was because I wanted to make sure that all of our students, whether they were, at one time or another, most kids grow up being an athlete at some point in time. Doesn't matter what the sport. And so my goal was to try to make sure that that was still an opportunity for anybody who wanted to be an athlete. So one was just making sure that they knew where to sign up, when to sign up, and doing things with the coaches about just communication. So a goal of ours has been to get student participation up. And I think we've done that. I don't have exact numbers again tonight, but for me, looking at the spring registration, we were up over 500. I look at the size of our teams compared to the competitors, whether it's track, baseball, softball, lacrosse. Most of our sports, we're one of only three teams that has a freshman softball team in the MVC out of 11 schools, give an example like that. We're still not quite back to the, having a freshman team for lacrosse, boys or girls, but the numbers are both higher than they were last year. So we're trending in the right direction, which is not happening at every community in the MVC, which is where we're really comparing ourselves to. So another big thing for me, just coming in, was fundraising. You know, and this ties into something else I'll talk about later, but a lot of teams, you know, students, whether they're in the booster club or soccer association, whatever it would be, you know, someone's going to come home or come to your door trying to sell cookies or Yankee candles or maybe mattresses. And they won't come to your door though.
On May 22nd.
Shameless plug. But the point is that there's a lot of that going around. And I think that that's something that, you know, I know as a coach at the school as well, it's something that's critically important to making the entire experience something that's available to all of our student athletes. Whether it's because they're student athletes with needs or whether it's because we need more equipment and it's just not in the budget or whatever it would be, sending students to nationals. Every program has a different way to use that fundraising money. A lot of them have been using it to hire assistant coaches. And that's something that we're really looking at and trying to find a way to make it more equitable, make it more planful and trying to really flush out how it's being done, what it's being spent on. So as far as the fundraising goes, we had every coach from the fall to the spring and the winter in between sign the acknowledgement of our policy, the policy that I think you guys endorsed a few years ago. In addition, you know, anytime a team needs to do a fundraiser, they have to submit a separate form. Each coach has been, you know, it's something that's been really part of our communication on our end from my office. So really just kind of keeping tabs on that and making sure that we're all, you know, anything that comes in is accounted for and we know where it's going when it goes back out. Okay? Coaches, I think we're blessed with, you know, I'll get to the facilities in a second, but amazing facilities, amazing coaches, amazing athletes. So, you know, I was set up for success and this is something that's, you know, I can only screw it up, I'll be honest. So our coaches, you know, we've hired a couple, a handful of new coaches. Our new hockey coach, a new indoor track coach in the winter. In the fall, we had a couple of new ones. We had a couple of new ones in the spring. So it's, we're all, I was able to do in-person team meetings for our coaching staff for the winter and the spring, which we hadn't done in person in several years. Every coach is CPR, AED certified. They're all CPR, AED CPR certified. They all have a concussion certification. They're all other certifications that might be linked to their specific sport. So across the board, we've been able to check a lot of boxes and make sure all of our coaches are equitably supplied with what they need to do. And then at the end of the year, I've had preseason, postseason meetings with many coaches. Still got a lot of work to do in that area on my end. That's an area of growth. But a lot of things that we haven't had the opportunity to do in person or do at all in the last several years have been happening. Facilities. So one of my major focuses, aside from being available and communicating at a higher level, was looking at our facilities. We are blessed with amazing facilities at North Andover High School, but they're all 18 years old right now. And I'm not sure, again, I don't have a great history of what has been done over those 18 years to keep up with. But we've got an amazing facility for gym. We've got an amazing Crozier Gym, Walsh Stadium, the baseball field, needs work, and we'll call that amazing, and the track facility. All of them are very expensive. And it's really coming up with a plan. I've got a lot of ideas and that's something you'll hear about in soon time. But I really focused a lot on what it would cost to do this, what it would cost to add this, how would it look to do this, and I'll get specific in a few weeks. But really, looking at where we stood with them and who was using them, how could we benefit from that money potentially coming in? And how could we use that to maybe, whether it's improve the things I'm looking at or other things that we need to do from a facility standpoint? Financials. So I think right now, and this is something I know that has been discussed, is right now, it's about $350,000 roughly raised through user fees. And that's something that, you know, without an athletic budget, that's something we need, those user fees, to be able to fund the things that we need to do from a facility standpoint, from a coaching standpoint, from buses, from a lot of different things. So, you know, something that has accented those would be a smaller stream of revenue through gate receipts. I haven't done that a lot this year, or we haven't done that a lot. In fact, we're not charging for any spring sports. We just made that decision. We charge for football. We charge for maybe, I think, two soccer games for the boys, two for the girls, maybe two volleyball games. We really didn't do a ton for the winter. I think we did basketball and we did ice hockey. There's definitely a shortfall as far as where we want to go with our programs and what we could potentially bring in through other means. There's really not a lot of means to do that. So that's definitely something I'd want to bring to the table and talk a little bit about. And then, you know, program needs. I mean, I think the coaches, it's funny, without really having a black and white, this is the one thing that Pac Agney and I talk about all the time daily. She talks about it being fake money and real money and this money. It's, you know, a lot of what we do is based on what we hope to bring in through user fees. And so when coaches sit down with me and say, hey, what's my budget? I don't know if I could have an answer after 10 years of doing this job and I certainly don't have one after 10 months. So that's one thing that I don't, Meg Pinkston and I in guidance talked about this all the time. We like to live in worlds that are black and white. Very gray is where the world we live in. I'd love to make it more black and white if I could. So that's something I'm striving for and I think that's going to come with experience. So. And I think this, so guys, again, I appreciate you inviting me tonight just to kind of give you an update where I'm at and I'm happy to answer any questions. But I think really from July until now, I've met with as many stakeholders who I could meet with, whether it's community members, alums, business owners, vendors, our parents, our student athletes and a lot of people in this room. Just trying to build a really solid base of knowledge of where we are, where we were, where we are and where we want to go. And I'll end with, you know, for me, I took this job, you know, it's like this is my midlife crisis. I took a brand-new job after 22 years of having an awesome job with some awesome people and I just felt like there's a big need here. And I think we can do some amazing things. Again, we already have those amazing facilities and coaches and everything I talked about. But we're selling an experience is where I kind of what I've come back to. You know, whether it's the experience for the kid who is the 22nd kid on a 21-person team, they still need to have an experience. And I lead every conversation with our coaches about, we all know we're not here because of wins and losses. It's, we're selling an experience. We're creating an experience, an opportunity. We're creating memories, Dr. Gilligan. So I think that's, for me, is, that starts with not just our uniforms to our facility, but also, all right, do we have a great scoreboard that people can actually see the score? Do we have things that when kids get off buses and walk into our gym are like, oh my God, I can't believe they get to play here? From anything from that to the littlest details. There's a lot of work to do and I'm excited for the challenge of this job because the more stones I turned over, the more work I've created for myself and for our team. But I'm really excited to come back. My hope is, in the next several weeks, to make recommendations that I'd love to see happen for the fall. And then probably more so next year, early in the next year, or the summer would be really what I'd be preparing. I'm looking at a five-year and a 10-year plan and trying to really make a big impact on this school community. And again, my lens is the athletic lens, but I think it spills into our pep band, any kids who walk into the gym or walk into our facilities at any level, pre-K through 12, and take pride in North Andover. So I'll stop there. I can go on and on.
Some questions?
Absolutely.
All right, Ms. Picard?
Thank you, Mr. Nugent. Your song sounds the same. You were in guidance before and you're in athletics now, but your song is the same, that this is really about the experience of students and it being a quality experience. So I appreciate that. I think that our development of a five-year plan for North Andover schools generally have put us in such a good position so that when COVID hit, we were able to immediately start addressing needs. So I'm really excited and encouraged. I don't remember ever hearing that there was a five- or 10-year plan for athletics before. So that's a really exciting thing. I don't know if you want to address it tonight, but perhaps when you come back in June or maybe something tonight. We've always had free and reduced lunch options for students who needed it, but we just heard from Erica that the free-for-all changed the equity landscape for kids. And so I would be curious to know what we think might happen if we had free-for-all athletics. My understanding of the research is that some families, when they know there's an athletic fee, simply choose something else for their students. And that's okay if it's a choice to go to work or to do other things after school. But if it's limiting their choice to participate in athletics, I'm curious to know what you think might happen in North Andover if it were possible to eliminate athletic fees. Thank you.
I'm happy to, you know, my gut says that we would have even more students participating or giving something a try. I do believe many student athletes aren't aware that they can play sports for free. Erica mentioned it earlier. I think if they qualify for free lunch, they could play sports for free. I don't know that they're aware of that, one. But two, if there wasn't a fee to begin with, I feel like that's just going to open the doors for more student athletes. And I'm not sure it would be dramatic, but I think it would definitely be an increase. I think the needle would definitely move.
Thank you.
Ms. Petrosi?
Thank you. I don't really have any questions, Helen. Kind of, I was kind of thinking the same thing. And I know that it's kind of like stuck between a rock and a hard place because the fees are clearly needed. But it does maybe hinder a lot of families, or many families or some families or whatever, attempting or trying or anything like that. But I'm really excited to hear about a five-year plan too. And I'm excited to see what happens and what your numbers will look like in June and hear more about it. Thank you. I think you're doing a great job.
Ms. Beck?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions about the fundraising that teams are doing and how the money is then spent. I'm mostly curious about like assistant coaches that are then, that are being paid for through those monies. One, just in assistance in general, are they also being, have the same certification standards for concussions and CPR and AED that all the other coaches do? And then if they are being hired through the funds that are being fundraised, are they, do they have the same evaluation standards and process that other coaches that we are paying directly have?
Great question. So let me go back to, I probably, I skirted right over that. Jim, you should have hit me. So we do not have any coaches being paid from fundraising in the district. That's something that we've made very clear from the beginning of this policy and it's something the coaches sign off for. So no fundraising money is being paid towards that. There are other means to pay assistant coaches, so I'll get to that at another time. But every coach who is in contact with our student athletes has the exact same standards. They're all, they all, we have made them all be CPR, AED certified, all have, you know, first aid training, all be with the concussion test. So all of them are at the same across the board. Bless you.
And they all go through the same hiring background check, all the same, that same process?
So that's, really, that's something that is being, it's a work in progress as well. So any, in my time, anyone who has come in who's new to the, whether they're a volunteer assistant, they're being paid by other means from a grant or whatever, or they're being paid from the school district, I've met with all of them prior to and we do the same hiring process. There's a lot of pre-existing volunteer coaches or coaches that may have been paid in the past through other means that I'm working towards. That's something that has already existed prior to me getting in.
What are the other means that?
I mean, I think that, like, I'll be honest and I'll, the elephant in the room is the youth track program. So it's not a fundraiser. It's a program, kind of like the boosters program and that's something that the coaches are paid. Some coaches are given stipends through that. That is, that's a gray area. That's a real gray area. But I want to make sure like every program, and that's the program I'm directly affiliated with, so I want to throw that out here right now. But I think that there might be a booster club in town that might, you know, whether it's on the record or off the record, taken care of. And I'm not saying the booster club. I'm talking all of our youth sports. It's something we need to work towards being on the same page. So on that note, if you don't mind, and that's one of my goals, is really to try to find a way to have the school district funding any coach who comes into contact with our student athletes. It's expensive and it's hard and I think that, you know, I can't get, I won't get too detailed into tonight, but, you know, when we talk about equitable distribution of our coaches, we have five paid coaches for the track program and there's 250 students. So if you do the math, it's 50 students per coach. It's not equitable when you look at, we might have 45 athletes on a basketball team, 15, 15 and 15, and there's three coaches. It's a lot different ratio. Now, there's one, one could argue the skill, there's other sports. You could argue the high level of detail or the risk that goes involved with, maybe it's gymnastics or cheerleading or other sports that have a higher risk. So it's really coming up with a comprehensive plan that kind of touches all of these things without damaging, without, you know, setting anyone back. But it's really just trying to be consistent. And so that's one of the things that I hope to bring to the table with the fall programs specifically in the next couple of weeks where I've identified a couple of areas where we really need to do something now and I'd love for it to be done through our lens here versus out in the community.
I think it might be helpful to know for each sport, what is an ideal ratio for coach to athlete? Because like on the football field, that's going to be, look very different than if you're in a pool in terms of how many, or in the gym or in your, on the field, like how many things you can do. I mean, that might help us understand the picture a little bit better.
Thank you.
You're doing fantastic. I love all the athletic programs. It's amazing for our kids.
Yeah, I have a couple of comments. So many of you know I sit on the booster club board. So in that role, I have, I've been dealing with Caitlin a lot for softball and she's been awesome. So thanks to you. I know Steve and I had a conversation in November. And I know communication was very important to you and it has definitely shown. Today is an example. Andover had a problem with busing, so they had to move their varsity game and JV. Andover had a problem with busing, so they had to move their varsity game and JV game to 4:30, which impacted all of our youth softball games tonight. And Kaitlyn gave me a text on Tuesday, and I was able to move the games around and move fields a little bit so that we could still play our games, where in the past, we'd show up at the field, varsity game would just be starting, and we'd have like two teams of, you know, third graders there sitting around for an extra hour. So that was, that's been awesome. The other thing that's been really good is we've got like almost full participation from the varsity softball team to help our booster club teams. So many of our middle school teams now have a high school player on the team to help out as coach. So Jocelyn took a lead in that and making that happen, too. So that's been wonderful. So those are my two, like, thank yous for that. And then I just want to touch on one thing you said about the gate receipts. My only concern on that is if you are charging for, you know, some of the girls' sports, I don't think people will come to watch. And it's a sad commentary on our society, but that would be my concern. Like, let's not shut people out from watching these sports because we're charging admission.
And that's, it's a great point, and I, and I, it's a fact, and it's, I'm not going to dance around that. That's, and even with, our hockey team doesn't play in town, going to Lawrence or going to Haverhill, we stopped charging for that maybe halfway through the season, at least for the students, and it dramatically improved the attendance for our student, student body. So I think it's one of those things where I'm just, again, I'm trying not to rock the boat this year. I'm trying to get to know as many people and try to learn the landscape before we make some significant recommendations that are hopefully going to be big-picture good, but that's one of the things that we're really, you know, cognizant of. And not to mention, you know, we're charging, let's just call it, you know, boys' and girls' basketball. We're charging people that come into Crozier. Well, it's the same people coming every single time, and they already paid a user fee. And now they're paying to get in to see their child or their, you know, their granddaughter or whatever. You know, and then maybe we're not charging for wrestling or indoor track or something else. Like, so it's not done equitably, you know, that's another thing that I have a problem with, so. And I don't know that we ever can, but it's one of those things where I have to kind of flesh it out, and, but I appreciate your point.
Just a couple of quick things. I know Mr. Hicks spoke a little bit just about coaches, and, you know, that's definitely something that we need to continue to kind of take a look at. And one of the concerns that we had as we started to dive into that was making sure that taxes were paid and that for coaches who might be looking to have that count as part of retirement calculations, that that is there as well. So that, that's definitely there. I love the, the multi-year plan, you know, just being able to think out. Don't expect you to walk in day one and kind of have that. But, you know, if it takes a year, two years to kind of come up with what that plan is, then, then that's great. Certainly fantastic. I love, one of the things I, I do is, is jump on Twitter at the end of every night and just kind of scroll through and see what's kind of going on and just seeing the daily update. You know, I try to hit, you know, at least one of the sports, you know, throughout the season, but just to know, you know, what happened with this team today. And sometimes I don't know that there's even a game going on, but, you know, I, I jump onto Twitter, and it's, it's not just the varsity team, it's varsity JV freshmen, like, everybody, you know, who we played. You know, the, the teams, I think, tweet out individually, you know, you know, something that might have happened at the game. But, you know, unilaterally, for, to see that representation for, you know, the, the entire team, I think, is a really nice thing, and it's, it's been very welcome by a lot of people in the community. And then the other kind of just question that I have, I was going to mention the mentoring. I think that that's so important for, for younger kids to kind of see and to learn from kids that maybe they know through a sibling or something like that, and thank you, Holly, for mentioning that. And my last question is, you know, I know we're probably limited a little bit in terms of the conference that we're in, but are there additional sports? Are there additional things that you may think we want to bring into the district in terms of being able to showcase some athletic capabilities? You don't have to answer that right now.
I'm going to answer one. I mean, I, I want, one of my goals is for us to have our own girls' ice hockey team. I mean, I think if you look at the team that went to the state semifinals, it's HPNA, you know, and so Haverhill, Penn Tucket, North Andover, out of the 22 girls on the roster, I think we had 14. We don't have enough to have our own team, but it's something that, that's one of the, one from like an equitable, you know, distribution of, all right, if we're going to pay for ice, let's pay for ice for both genders type of thing. That is tied to some of my recommendations that are going to be coming out down the road, but I think that's, that's definitely something. There are other sports that, other programs. I'm looking at rugby right now, just behind the scenes. It's a spring sport, a lot of, it's happening around the state. It's one of those ones the MIA is pushing. I think Chelmsford's the closest one that has one in the MVC. There might be two schools in the MVC that have it. Again, that's really more just me thinking out loud right now, but other than that, I haven't given it a lot of thought to beyond the girls' ice hockey.
Okay. Fair.
I just want to add that Steve has definitely given new meaning to hit the ground running. I think everybody knows that, but he attacked the low-hanging fruit immediately, took care of things that should have been done over time and hadn't been addressed. He's talking about some big plans, and he keeps saying, Jim, Jim, tell me if, if I'm going too far. And I, I say, no, we need it all out there. We won't be able to do it all, but we need to know what, what it is. And I've heard from more people about Steve than I've heard about anybody in a long time, and it's all positive about what a difference he's making in the community. So it's just been great.
Agreed on that.
And I'd just echo those sentiments. I mean, one of the most important things a superintendent can do is hire good administrators. Steve's done a remarkable job. I knew he would. And again, I had a lot of different athletic events. It's not always the varsity. In fact, sometimes the freshman, some of my favorites, and the JV, but that's been a common theme throughout wherever I go is, like, oh, well, it's been tremendous to have Steve Nugent, it's been tremendous to have his enthusiasm, it's been tremendous to have the communication and the nightly scorecard on Twitter. I think that you have rosters available pretty much on Twitter as well for different events. And I love the enthusiasm in which you're tackling some really old problems that are problematic in most districts across Massachusetts. You know, we put in a user fee in 1990 here in North Andover, you know, 32 years ago. You know, a lot of schools only charge for a couple of sports. But I love that you're turning over all these stones, thinking about creative ideas. Love the enthusiasm and keep up the good work. And thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right. I have a couple more updates, but if we want to dismiss these guys, you're free to go.
Thanks.
So really, just a couple of the quick updates, you know, it was great the Friday before break to get our newest member, Mr. Hicks, to a bunch of our schools. We almost made them all, you know, and it was great just for him to see some of the physical spaces that he hadn't seen in the past. Additionally, over break, I had the pleasure of presenting or meeting at the Senior Center with our senior citizens, with myself and town manager, Melissa Murphy Rodriguez, or Melissa Rodriguez, and we talked about facilities master plan, too. It was a great group of folks. You know, it's always scheduled for an hour, but I feel like we probably were there, too. They had great questions, and it was really nice to connect with that population. And what was really pretty cool was, you know, a lot of them were grandparents and maybe even some great-grandparents. And, you know, they were talking about some of the challenges and, you know, school opportunities their own grandkids have, might not just be here in North Andover, it's other places, so, you know, they were really up to date on a lot of school stuff. And I don't know if that was COVID-related or, you know, it's just they're, they're learning more about their own grandkids. So that was terrific. The town manager and I today met with the PTO presidents, which was really terrific. It's great to have our new school committee liaison, Holly, with us. But we, we had the opportunity to talk about facilities master plan, too, with the PTO presidents, and to go over that, much like we did at the Senior Center. And the kindergarten registration, you know, this is kind of a standing item. It's on our website front page. You know, register if you know anyone that's of school age for kindergarten, tell them to get out and register. Once you register, then we'll have screening dates, set up screening. The initial dates we have are June 21st and through the 24th, and then always, you know, we'll have some late registrations all the way up through the course of the school year, starting, and, and we figure out a way how to get those students screened. And two other just quick items. This week, I think Wednesday's the official day, but it's Administrative Assistance Week or Day. You know, I know here at Central Office, we're having a breakfast in the morning for them, or we're to honor their, the, the work that they've done. They've been remarkable throughout the course of this year, the pandemic. You know, I think that, you guys know the folks, usually when I walk into a school or when there was a principal of a school, they'd say, can I see the second in charge? And they were asking for the principal. You know, Amy Memelo was the admin assistant at Thompson, and, you know, that was kind of the joke. But they are remarkable. I just wanted to have a shout-out to them. You know, and we don't have school committee next week, but next week, we're on the eve of, you know, May 2nd starts Teacher Appreciation Week. And I like to really think of it as Educator Appreciation Week because all of our staff here in town, in our school system, works to educate students. In a lot of ways, I think, folks who don't work in schools think last year was the hottest year with COVID, and this has been a really challenging year for schools across the Commonwealth and, and our country, and our teachers have been, and educators have just been awesome. So just an early recognition for Teacher Appreciation next week. I'm sure that the schools will be doing awesome things to celebrate all the great work that they do. And as superintendent, I couldn't be more appreciative of what our staff does each and every day for our students. So I believe that that is it for the superintendent's report tonight.
Any questions?
Kindergarten registration, like, do we have any indication within how the numbers are looking so far? Are they where they usually are?
Yes, I posted, I posted in the April 15th newsletter the exact number, so I want to double-check that. I think it was 289.
Is that on par with what we projected?
It is. It's hard to tell you. It depends on when people actually get out to register. And I think with COVID, sort of the rush to register and all of that has changed over the last couple of years. So it's, you know, we're not really low. It is, it is about average. We expect more. And when Greg mentioned the screenings, that is also on our website, and there is a link to, to click on, and you can sign up for your screening now. They're typically 20 minutes. And they'll be, like Greg said, right after school gets out, but that's open for signing up for now as well, so.
Thank you.
Yes, 289. You know, it may be updated. I'll have to check with Mike Grant and Power School and see where we're at with those registrations, but, you know, it's right on target. I mean, it's been really high, I think, the first year. We were at the Ann Bradstreet Early Childhood Center. We had 343 kindergartens.
The highest.
You know, and 289 is actually right around the number we have now. So we will have some registrations where students may not come, they may stay, you know, they might be in a particular program. Oftentimes, when they're comfortable, they went to preschool somewhere and they'll stay in K. That's right, right, right around that mark, so.
Looks like, question for Ms. Picard?
Yeah, I have a, I have a feedback that came from a parent in the community. The first step on registering your student for kindergarten says determine homeschool. And I had a parent who was confused by that, and they were like, wait, what are we encouraging people to homeschool? And I think what that really means is determine neighborhood school. But I also think that's maybe a leftover from when students would attend each of the neighborhood schools for kindergarten. So just ask you guys to take a look at that and see if you want to change that language from homeschool to something else. And then my question is, out of a parent experience, how are families informed of the results of the kindergarten screening? When my own child went to the kindergarten screening, and I knew full well that that child did not, did not have any aspect of the alphabet in the pocket, and that kindergarten screening was never shared with us, so I'm, I'm wondering how, how we share that now.
I can check and see what they're going to do this year. They do share some information with parents when parents are there at the screening. I don't think it's like a formal piece of paper that they give to parents. Again, it's a screening. It's used to help determine and try to make equitable classes. It's not, it's not like a, it's not like the, an assessment that is really grading the child. It's just to get some information. And I will tell you, having a nephew in kindergarten this year, there can be a great deal of difference in the child when they do the screening in June and when they start school in September. So again, I, I want to emphasize the fact that this isn't like a big assessment. It's kind of, you know, where, where is this child? Kindergarten, people have heard me say this, kindergarten teachers have heard me say this, I think it is the most challenging grade to teach. It is very, very difficult. Having come from secondary schools and then being at Thompson as an elementary school, you have kids who walk in who don't know how to sit in the chair yet. We actually had kids who were not potty-trained, like you assume that they are when they come into school. And we have kids that are, are able to decode at a second-grade level. So you have a wide range that those kindergarten teachers are working with. And there's a great deal of change by month in many of these kids. So again, it's a screening, so we don't, we don't make a big deal out of it and alert parents like, oh, my gosh, your child can't do something at this point, because that could be a very different story in two months when they start kindergarten.
And it can also be some big red flags that families should be aware of.
And that would be talked about, yeah. I mean, I was at the screening last year, and there were definitely some instances where there were conversations that took place with parents at the, at the screening time.
Thank you.
Yep.
And just quickly, I think our cutoff date is August 31st or September 1st. I think it's August 31st.
It's August 31st. Someone who has a son was born September 6th.
Okay. And I think your point, Ms. Marks, is, is really valuable, you know, whether or not somebody is ready at that point, you know, so much changes. I remember my daughter has a fall birthday and thinking she is not ready for kindergarten. And, you know, she had to wait the extra year, and, you know, within a couple of months, I was like, yeah, she probably was going to be ready for that. But, you know, it's a very fast change developmentally, you know, at that point, so. Awesome. Thank you. Anything else? Any other questions? All right. Not a ton here. I just want to talk a little bit about town meeting update. Couple of quick things, as you may or may not know, town meeting has been a little bit different for the past couple of years. Still slated for May 17th, will be indoors. Last I heard, we were indoors. One of the things that is done in preparation with the town moderator is we have a on-the-warrant kind of Q&amp;A session that's done where he gathers the chair of the school committee, FinCom, the select board, town manager, Dr. Gilligan, and just kind of asks different questions about, you know, what's going on with that. That's recorded by NACAM, and usually a couple of days later, they start to kind of broadcast that out so people can understand what's happening in the warrant. You know, they may not understand, for example, you know, why something is on the warrant, and the town moderator, Mark DeSalvo, really helps to kind of put that education out. And there are daily, I don't know, blasts, I guess is probably the best way to say it, you know, article of the day. So, you know, today, there was one, I don't remember if it was 13 or 14, but, you know, it was citizens petition regarding an age restriction or something like that, just to kind of start to get people aware of those, excuse me, as well. So we will be taping that on Monday. I am trying to move a work commitment for that, but that will be coming up. The other thing that we do, just kind of in an aspect of transparency, we all meet together to just go over the motion book. So, you know, if you've been to town meeting, you know, you kind of walk in, you get, I don't know, probably a quarter of an inch booklet of all the warrants and the wording and all of that, and so we kind of just sit and go through that so that we understand exactly what's going on, make sure, I think it's already gone to print at this point, but, you know, if something is, does not have a vote, whether it's favorable or unfavorable from either the school committee, FinCom, or the select board, just as a reminder that typically at town meetings, someone will ask, what is the recommendation of that? So just kind of going through all of those, those pieces for that. So that'll be good. And then we did change, I'll say it at the end again, but our next meeting is May 9th, which is on Monday. So we are typically a Thursday night kind of crowd, but we're moving to Monday night. We'll do that. And then we do meet probably for 30 minutes or so just before town meeting, usually up in the library. the library, we try to make sure we've got someplace open to the public, but we just, just meet in case there's anything that needs to happen, any vote or anything of that nature. So it's not really a televised meeting, but we just, you know, we have that there. It is posted up there as well. So just wanted to be transparent with that. The second item that we have tonight, I'm gonna turn over to our new chair, who said, wait, like, how does all this work again?
That's exactly what I said.
So Ms. Petrowski, can you talk just a little bit about the Hall of Fame, Educator Hall of Fame, and some of the deadlines that are coming up for that?
Yeah, so I, I actually did say, how does this all work? And got the folder, I think, last week. And so I've been kind of looking through. There are three candidates or nominations in there from, I think, last year they came in. And so I've reached out to the people who have nominated the, their candidates to, we needed some more information from them. So I've reached out to them, and the deadline for anybody to submit a new nomination is April thirtieth, which is Saturday, which I realize is very quick and coming fast. But I think we're okay with the three that we have in if we don't get additional. And then starting to put together the committee. So again, still learning. So we need a union member who I've reached out to. Thank you, because you connected me. And I've emailed her, and then I've asked Helen to be the second school committee member. I hope that's okay that I just asked her.
Your, your subcommittee?
I just, kind of just, I, I feel like I'm a little bit behind getting started on it, so I'm just kind of like trying to get as much done as possible. So that's kind of where we stand right now. I think we have probably till the end of May to get our committee together and start reviewing the candidates, and hopefully we'll get some more information on each of them. Or some new nominations by Saturday.
Any questions for Ms. Petrowski? Alright, perfect. Alright, we will move forward. Dr. Mealy, the School Capacity Project and Master Facilities Plan.
Yeah, not a lot to report. We continue to send out weekly messages to address frequently asked questions. Dr. Gilligan talked about he and the town manager going to the Senior Center, and their visit's been indicative. While we, we haven't had a lot of participation in our public forums and public meetings that we've been having, everyone that we have talked to, the projects, especially the two that are up for a vote this year, have been very well received. I haven't actually heard anybody speak negatively of them, which is very encouraging going into town meeting. So, that's about it.
Okay. Alright. There is no old business. Just as a reminder, last meeting, we did have some, some old, we did have some new business, but we suspended the rules and voted on that. It was a warrant for town meeting, so there's no old business this meeting. There is no new business this meeting. So I would look to the public to see if there's any public comment, and we have been abandoned. So before we go to any motion to adjournment, I would ask for some member comments, and Ms. Picard, we'll start with you.
Yeah, I, I did say before Christina Minakuchi really was, or Erica said that she was really a champion for the all meals free for students. Christina did announce this week that she's not gonna run for reelection. She is gonna finish out her term, and I just feel like she's done such a wonderful job for North Andover, and I'm so thankful for her, for her service and that she's gonna finish out her term, serving us well. There's been a change in districts, so we'll be looking forward to seeing who the candidates are for that.
Awesome, thank you. Ms. Petrowski?
I don't really have any comments this evening. Thank you.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes, I'm super excited for town meeting on May seventeenth. I hope, encourage all the public people to attend and make sure that we come out to support what's best for our kids and best for our schools in regards to Facilities Master Plan Two, and securing the extra funding that could really help move those project, projects along. So please be there.
Ms. Wietzke?
I have a comment, but Greg, you may be able to help me, or Laureen. I know the eighth grade civics class, I believe it's HC, they're working on something they started last year with the Salem Witch Project, create, trying to get a bill passed, and a local filmmaker is doing a documentary and is gonna film the class, I believe, May ninth and tenth. Are you aware of that?
I was not aware of that.
Oh, okay.
But I, I do remember the project that was going on.
Yes.
They were trying to get a woman's name exonerated.
It's exactly right. So it's Miss LaPierre's classes.
Yeah, so that's, that's awesome.
They've continued it.
Thank you for letting me know.
I thought I was pretty excited. I did reach out to, you know, Christina and Trom to try to get the governor to participate in the filming, but he's unavailable.
Thank you.
But they're working on it.
Thank you for that. It's really cool. I think it's a really, it's a really awesome project, so.
And that may have crossed my desk. There are so many accolades that come to the eighth grade for all the work that they do in civics, that, you know, it's, they're recognized quite a bit, and they've done an amazing job. But that's an amazing project, and, you know, that, that was national news all last year.
Right.
I saw it in the New York Times, all over the different papers, so.
I just learned about it this week, so it's relatively new news.
So I, I guess the only thing before we adjourn, you know, obviously kind of working to get back to normal, and I can't even believe that, like, prom season is coming up and is tomorrow. So I wish all of the juniors and their dates a wonderful prom. I think this year, we are back to allowing dates from other classes and other schools as well. I think last year, it was only members of that individual class who are allowed to attend junior and senior prom. So, so important for, I think, kids to bring, you know, whoever they want to bring, whether they're from another grade within the school or a, a separate school for that as well. So certainly great. And then Dr. Gilligan stole a little bit of my thunder with Education Week coming up next week. And I, I always forget, I think it's like the seventh or the eighth that's Teachers' Day?
May third.
Is it the third?
It's May third.
Really?
It's hard to tell. You, you Google different websites, and they have different dates.
Okay. I, I just Googled it. It said the third.
Okay.
Google could be wrong.
And I had the second through the sixth.
The Google is never wrong. It settles every argument in our house. So, that's been going on that. So happy Education Day to two of our teachers who are on the committee, all of our educators and administrators who, who help us deliver the good work in town. So, and with that, I would take a motion to adjourn. Looks like eight seventeen. So motion, so motion made by Ms. Wietzke, seconded by Ms. Petrowski. Any discussion? Seeing none, hearing none. We'll start virtually. Ms. Picard?
Yes.
Ms. Petrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Ms. Wietzke?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. We are adjourned.